Non-public session three from July 9. Oh, sorry. Was that three?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah. Motion by Mrs. Cardinal to approve, second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion on these. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain. Non-public session four from July 9. Fun meeting.
(laughing).
Sorry, Mr. (laughing).
Motion by Mrs. Cardinal, second by Ms. McElhenney to approve. Discussion on these minutes. Mr. Frida, do you have something?
No, no.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain. Non-public session five from July 9.
Would you approve?
Motion by Mrs. Cardinal, second by Mr. Frida. Discussion on these. Hearing on, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain.
Boom.
Boom.
All right. New business, football agreement with Newt High School.
Okay. So, in your packets, there was attached a draft of the agreement. Cheryl Peabody has looked over this with the, or at least has spoken with the Newt Athletic Director. They're in agreement that there needs to be some compensation per player with the football team. We've had minimal contributions from Newt in the past. This is just the email on that.
Sorry, I didn't get a chance to read that.
That's okay. Let me pull that for you. There you go, right there.
Right here, thank you.
Yep. Long and short, they're looking for a contribution of $350 per player that makes the team from Newt, which will go toward the equipment and the field work and what have you. That's about the average of what we're spending per player. And then looking to have that, if the board approves this, I would then sit down with their superintendent and then it would go to their board for approval as well. So, this is in draft language. Go ahead.
Sorry. Am I reticent that there hasn't been a formal agreement between the two yet?
There has been an agreement that just says, "We're going to have a joint football team." And we're going to, it's here and essentially Cheryl is doing the, or our A.D. is doing the coordination of scheduling. But beyond that, there hasn't really been anything that's included any type of remuneration at all. So...
First of all, the date is wrong.
Okay.
In the history of the program.
Okay.
I don't know where 2002 came, in 2002...
That is too early.
That is way too early.
Yeah.
That may have been when the Gridiron Club began...
Started talking about things.
A club, they did a club that played against some schools.
It was 2009, wasn't it?
It was when I was A.D.
Yeah.
So, it was somewhere between 2008 and '12, and I think it was around nine or 10. So, I think we should...
Yeah, I was still here.
Yeah.
So, I will confirm that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I'll move to accept this as a first.
Other than that, motion by Mrs. Cardinal to accept as a first draft, second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion?
I'm not sure I have a discussion point, but I was, I was teaching at Newt in 2002, and I remember the boys talking about it there. So, it could be that they were starting to talk about that.
Have the conversation.
And it, so maybe that's what they need. Maybe we just want to clarify.
Well, it wasn't approved by any, it says it was approved, the, both boards approved the formation. We had to apply to the NHI-A first before we could even do a co-op. Now, when they were a club team back in 2002, I would not be surprised at all if there were kids from other towns playing on that team. There were kids that graduated that played on that team because they were trying to do numbers and they didn't have any, they didn't have any bylaws to follow. So, it was kind of all over the place.
Loose.
But the formation of the co-op team happened somewhere around nine-ish, 10, maybe.
I was here.
Yep.
So, it had to have been before...
Because we had to go before the football committee and ask permission.
It had to have been before June of 2010.
Yeah. Okay. So, if we can just, any other discussion on this?
Just in regards to the $350 per student that's paid out through the school district for students?
That would be paid from Newt to us, per Newt student that makes the team.
Now, in return, will they have the students pay a portion of that? I mean, how does that...
That's entirely up to them.
Oh, wow.
Probably their athletic fund will pay, like, just like they would pay their own sports equipment and stuff. They'll pay us to support them.
How do we do it on our end for football?
That's why we have an athletic budget.
Gotcha. I'm just curious.
How was the fee amount arrived at? I'm assuming Cheryl did a breakdown cost?
That was the two A.D.s talking about what, what was the average that they had talked, that they had been spending.
Wow. All right. I think it's very thorough agreement. I want to congratulate both Ms. Peabody and, I'm not sure who the...
Mr. Shea, John Shea.
Mr. Shea, thank you.
Okay.
All those in favor as a first draft? Aye.
Aye.
If we can just find that date, I think we can polish that off.
Okay.
All right. You have a grant acceptance?
I do. Okay. So, this one is the fresh fruits and vegetable grant that we have received for the last several years from the state. We've received our allocations. Henry Wilson is $21,970. Valley View is $18,070. And like all grants, I need a motion to accept the revenues.
Just a, well, go ahead. But I'll move into it.
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Frida, second by Ms. McElhenney. Oh, discussion, sorry.
Just for clarification, there's a letter attached to the PDF that probably doesn't belong there.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So, someone got shoved in the copy machine with it.
Oh, oops. Okay, thank you.
So, you might want to remove that before you make it public.
I will do that. Thank you. Will do.
Any other discussion on this?
What were we expecting from these lines? Is it close to...
This is, this is roughly what we've gotten. It's, it fluctuates a little bit with whatever the DOE has left and what the market will bear. But this is close to what we've received in the past.
Now, do we need matching funds for the used grants or no? No? Okay.
This is all they will pay. So, I mean, if we decided we wanted to do, we're required to do at least two days a week. If we decided we wanted to do this daily, then we would be paying the additional.
Gotcha.
We can't feed kids. Sorry.
Drive on the draft, will we?
Yeah, is this based on enrollment at all, the application?
It is based on enrollment, and typically when they do the allocations, it's based on a year or two behind because, because, because...
I think, oh, no, that's going to be Rodney. Never mind. Okay.
Anything else?
Just to, you know, note for the minutes, so the total across both schools is $40,040. $40,040. Four zero zero four zero.
Motion to second, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Damage update to Farmington High School due to a recent flood.
Yes. Today's the 23rd, sorry. Okay.
Was there discussion during the July 9?
No, there was not. And so, I wanted to kind of say what happened and then go from there. So, the evening of July 5, we had some fairly significant downpours. When custodians arrived the next morning, they discovered water in the main lobby here at the high school, opened up the office. There was an inch and a half to two inches of water through the main office, guidance, the nurse's office into room 100. Went upstairs, the main lobby upstairs was awash, as was room 100, room 200 and 201 had some damage. All hands on deck, shop vacs come out. They started immediately trying to get rid of the water. We did have a mitigation service come in to make sure that we weren't going to be dealing with mold issues and those other sorts of things. The drywall in all of those affected rooms was cut back to about two and a half feet or so because it had stood overnight and had whipped up the, up the drywall, and so that was cut back. In the intervening weeks, we now have sheet rock replaced. It's taped. I believe they'll be painting probably tomorrow or so. I do have pictures if you want to see before and after. There are some fairly significant pieces that we've lost in the office. We need to have a copier replaced. It was a total loss. Microwave, some other pieces there that were in the main office that were awash. The issue that happened is our, for our roofing project, our roofers had carefully covered the main drain while they were doing pieces to make sure that nothing went down and clogged it. They failed to remove the covering, and so when we had the downpours, it came around and under and, so there's also potentially some damage on the gym floor. We're looking to see exactly where that's going to go as well.
Anything in the music room?
No, the music room was untouched. It was only the main office side of the lobby over. So, nothing that way. The library was untouched, but everything from that area was piled out into the lobby. Getting into the office was tough for a while. They had the big tubes in and blowers, and those of you who may have come up by, the big coal fire generator was out there making sure that we had enough to keep things going. So, it's been a tremendous effort to get things back as quickly as they have been done. We're working with our insurance company to get things covered and cleared as quickly as we can. There will be a deductible because that's part of life, but that's probably the least of our issues right now. The damage was not nearly as extensive as it could have been. Actually, no computers were affected, which is amazing. We were definitely being watched out for there. And so, and as the carpet in room 200 really needed to be replaced, now it will be (laughing) the hard way.
Questions from Ms. Lawn about Mr. Frida?
So, we have to pay a deductible, but is the company who clogged the drain going to take responsibility for that?
They have taken responsibility for the payment. Our insurance companies are working it out. I mean, we will owe Primex the deductible whether we turn around and, and put that on the other company. Certainly, that's our option, and we just need to be careful that we're not spending more than the deductible to get it recovered. So...
So, they're, they're not taking responsibility. We're going to have to fight for it.
We might have to fight for the deductible. I'm not sure about that part. The rest of it, they're taking responsibility for, and as it is considerably higher than our deductible, like, hundred folds.
What's our deductible?
Our deductible is $1,000.
It's just if they're going to pay for the rest of it, why don't they pay $1,000?
Well, and they might. I just don't have that commitment yet.
I understand.
So...
Okay. Let's push a little.
I'm happy to do so.
You shouldn't even have to claim it.
Doesn't cost to push.
Directly.
Until you really push.
Well, they're, they're a transfer company, you should pay directly. We should even have to claim it.
All right. Okay. Thank you for that update.
I digress.
Technology update preview?
And actually, there's a second before we go to that, that I do have a second grant.
Okay.
I've finally gotten the award letter on the security upgrade grants that I was hoping that we were going to see back before the end of the school year. So, we've been approved for grants at all three schools. Valley View has been awarded $23,608. The, Henry Wilson has received $12,332. And Farmington High School has been approved for $23,448. Those are 80% of cost, which means that we have a 20% matching. If we are going to take advantage of the funds...
$1,388. No, that's your donate.
So, 20% of that?
20% of that. So, if we, to take advantage of that, we'll need to have the work done prior to April 1.
Is that possible? Well, it says the award must be claimed by April 1.
Must be claimed by April 1.
So, work needs to be scheduled by April 1.
Work needs to be scheduled by April 1, yes.
Awarded and whatnot.
Yeah. Well, it says if you're unable to complete your project by that time, please contact the department.
And we have to encumber the money by that.
Okay, let's get clarification.
So, yeah.
So, we'll need to encumber $12,000 in order to satisfy our end of this deal. Okay.
Because the total I have is 59,388, is that correct? Did you have the...
I haven't, I didn't total it that way. Yeah, it's broken out. So, 23 and 23 is going to be 46 and change plus another 12, so roughly.
Yeah. Yeah. I just have a question. Do we have that money in a line anywhere?
I, it's not in a line, no. I had it set aside last year.
Right.
And at this point, I don't know exactly where that's going to be. I'm going to have to do some scrutinizing of the lines to see if that's something we can do. I'm hoping.
When do we have to accept it by?
It says April 1, but it's that claimed by and completed by, so I need to, I'm thinking I will need to know by March where we are, early March.
Okay. Can we revisit this in maybe our second meeting in September? Does that sound like a reasonable amount of time? Because we'll need to accept the grant before any...
Right.
Projects go up to bid or whatnot.
But just letting you know that it's been, at least...
Do we have a deadline to tell them we're going to spend that money? Because they might want to reallocate it if we don't take it.
The only date I've been given is April 1.
The completion date, okay.
So...
So, we technically can't vote on anything on, on accepting it tonight, then?
I can't tell you the line from which I will take the, the 20%.
My first September meeting would be on Labor Day, so I'm assuming we'll push that off to the second one. We could go second, fourth, or second, third. Either way, we're going to double up somewhere. So, it would be like the 10th and 17th for our September meeting. So, is that a motion to table until the September 17 meeting? By Mrs. Cardinal?
Yes.
Second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion, no, no discussion on table motion. All those in favor? Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And that also says that we're meeting the 10th and the 17th, so that's, thank you.
Two birds, one stone.
All right, technology.
So, the technology piece, our new tech director has...
Who's awesome, by the way.
She is, yes. She's amazing.
What's her name?
Her name is Jennifer Loughton, and she has been very, very, very busy for the last two and a half weeks or so, mapping out the district one fire at a time. And a few things that she has discovered are going to require some ingenuity and creativity on how we move forward. What I would like to do is, number one, let you know that we are going to need to probably replace our firewall sooner rather than later. And I do have some plans that she and I are going over our options, how that's going to work. But what I would like to do is to propose a workshop at some point in early September, if not the end of August, for the board to get to meet her, but also to hear some of what we are finding so that you have a better understanding of some of the things that I'm going to need to bring to you, not only this year, but moving forward into the next budget season. So, that's kind of a proposal, and look at your calendars and see what might work there. But just to have kind of a, let's chat about before we get too deep in the weeds.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Is that, is that it?
That's it, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Oh, Mrs. Cardinal?
May I ask a request, a friendly request?
Sure.
Not a formal motion or anything, but could we get a brief bio on Jennifer?
Sure.
You know, just kind of shared with the school community?
Sure.
So, that folks can know a little bit?
She does have an About me page if you want to look it up.
Oh, wonderful. If she doesn't mind sharing that.
I don't think she would.
Check with her. Just your next opportunity when we talk with her.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a wonderful way to introduce her to the community.
And I have sent out to the district a little bit of, but I will send to others as well.
Oh, great. Could you copy?
Oh, can we send out with a part of that, too?
I can do that. It doesn't have a lot of her bio. It has more, but I will...
That's right. I'll get the rest of it.
Absolutely. And she's, she's a Power School U this week, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Old business. Is there any?
Not that I have.
Any old business from the board?
Well, no, I just have, there was something in the packet regarding kindergarten aid?
Oh, yes. We did get, sorry, one more, one more letter. There you go. We got our tentative, here's what you're getting for kindergarten aid, and I need to go back and look at the figure because I don't have that printed.
Do you have it?
I do. I'm just looking up what ours is. Hold on one second. I saw it the other day.
$77,550.
77,550. Thank you. The state has said this is our allotment from what they're calling Keno Garden.
Keno aid.
Keno aid, yes.
Keno Garden aid.
The superintendents were told back in the spring that unequivocally, this is guaranteed this year, this is what you're getting. Some of the BAs were told, "You might not want to include it in your revenues." The figure that we included, because at the time that they were guaranteeing the superintendents who would get it, two towns had passed Keno. And that's a lot of gambling for those two towns. So, what we had put in, our initial allocation that we were given, was actually lower than that. It was around $64,000. So, this is higher than we had put into our revenues, which is good news. I'm hoping that we do see this. That would be lovely. I'm not going to count my extra chickens until I see the check.
When would that be?
I'm guessing it might arrive with adequacy aid, but again, I'm not going to count on it. They also have said that in giving us this, they may very well reduce adequacy aid. It may almost be a wash.
Okay.
So, we may be guaranteed this, but what's adequate may no longer be quite so. So, that's more by way of telling you what I know about revenues when I know them.
Don't forget to vote.
Mrs. Cardinal?
Is there a statute describing or alluding to what the rules are for...
Yes, and I can...
Expending this, these funds?
The expenditure, because we have full day kindergarten, this is, is that piece. So, it's, my understanding is that it's a general fund cost, but we're getting it based on our full-time kindergarten enrollments. Or it is a general fund revenue, rather. So, but I will certainly get the documentation uploaded for the board on that.
Yeah, it'd just be, I think it'd be just be very good information for all of us to have, where this is brand new.
Absolutely.
Because it's, it's using a 70.5 estimated ADM for us. That would be a kindergarten-only population for an estimated ADM.
It is. It is only kindergarten.
Yeah.
And it's based on last year, not...
Just out of curiosity, do we know our incoming kindergarten enrollment to date? I know we get a lot at the very beginning of school.
I don't have the number. Have you seen recently for kindergarten? Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. I can have those for our next August meeting.
A motion for the, for the, or just...
I think it's a good idea. Yeah.
A motion to accept the aid?
Yes.
Well, this is just an estimate.
Yeah, well, we don't know the dollar.
You don't have an award letter of any sort, right?
I don't have, well, what's in your, is the closest I have to an award letter. It's, here's your allocation.
Okay.
So...
We don't get an award letter for the other formal funding that we get from the DOE?
I get the list. That's what I sent you last year. I get the list of, here's, here's everybody and here's what they get.
I'm a little hesitant to accept it just in case the money changes.
Exactly, because what if a number comes in greater than the amount we're accepting?
Then I would certainly come back to you and say, "Let's accept the balance."
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
I would be very surprised if we get a lot more than this because it is about 12 more than I was expecting.
Right.
So, I'm not guessing it's going to go up another 12.
My question is, what if it comes in less? Then we just make a motion to...
Well, you, or you've accepted up to this amount and...
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right. I can, I'll make the motion to accept the estimated kindergarten aid for our district.
Of 77,550?
Yes.
Motion by Mrs. McElhenney, second by Mr. Frida for the discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Does any, do any board members have any old business?
Not old.
No? Oh, no.
I have new as well.
Oh, okay.
That's all right.
I just, do you want to go to new now?
No, no, we're already kind of in new. I just having good...
I just wanted to point out that the training from the School Board Association, the list came out, and there's two trainings on September 9th and 13th on budgeting, which I would recommend that we send the business administrator to. And on August 23rd, there's a training during the day on policies, which I'd like to go, but you might want to go to that. So, I just wanted to bring that up and see if we, I guess we have permission to go. We bought the training, right?
Right. We have unlimited access to the training.
So, we should use it.
It's new. It's excellent.
Those are my things.
Yeah, coordinating.
What, I don't, I didn't see that. So, what, did, were there any just details about the budgeting one?
They are. If you check your email, you should have gotten one on the, the list of trainings.
When was that? When did we get that?
And I stopped forwarding them to everyone because everyone was telling me, "We get those."
I don't check that you were on their distribution. I'll forward it to you.
Train, yes.
It's from the New Hampshire School Boards Association.
It came July 16th. That's when it was sent out.
It was last Monday. I don't remember getting that.
It says, and it's titled NHSBA 2018 Training Schedule.
Yeah.
So, they are...
Thank you. Okay, other new business?
Well, just a quick amendment. Well, just a quick amendment. On the September 11th, is that the basics of school district budgeting? Is that the one that you're talking about?
Yeah.
What's on the 11th? We have something scheduled 9/11. Don't we?
Oh, you said 9 and 13 stand.
September 11th and 13th.
11 and 13.
There's something I remember I want to say. Is, don't we have something scheduled on 9/11 or no?
9/10 was the word.
That's in the board.
Yeah, no, I thought there was something scheduled for 9/11.
It may very well, that's around when the high school open house typically is.
Maybe that's what I'm thinking of. I have that date stuck in my head for some reason.
It's not set in stone, but that's usually the weekend. It's generally a Tuesday night.
Oh, I have a library meeting. Knew I knew it for some reason. I take it back. Wrong board.
Okay. Any other old business?
Oh, actually.
Excuse me, new business?
Yes. I think I want to just go ahead and jump into making a motion to have all of our financial documents on a regular basis posted on our sa61.org website.
Okay.
That would be our three monthly financial reports, and then annually, our audit documents.
And the audit documents have been up?
They're linked to the school website?
I believe they were, yes.
Great.
But I will, I will confirm that, but.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Monthly.
Second by Mr. Frida. Discussion?
So what I was thinking was, you know, just to get into some more parameters around it. So as of the first of each month, report could be run for the close of the previous month. For example, on August 1st, if we could run all three of those monthly reports for July 1 through July 31st of 2018, then that would provide a consistent and as much up-to-date as possible for a one-month snapshot.
Okay. And so looking.
History.
Looking then at, well, and when I, when it's run, it would be run for the perimeter of that month anyway. Are you wanting it posted to the website right on the first, or are you wanting it posted following the board's review of those?
I believe for the sake, and this would be, you know, included in this motion, would be for the sake of transparency, just go ahead before school board review. And then during school board review, if there's any issues or concerns found, possibly any errors, because it's possible, then a correction can be made.
Can we post it?
Rerun the reports and repost.
Okay.
And just to give you a little bit of insight as to why, so I've proposed to the budget committee that we run a workshop on expectations for both school and town municipal financial expectations, reporting expectations. And I think that it'd be great if, as a school district, we kind of led by example in terms of exactly what level of detail and timing. And it's always the same expectation all the time, and we mean it because we, you know, as a governing body, put that on ourselves. I thought it'd be great to lead by example and go ahead and do that ahead of any sort of requests coming out of a workshop, just in anticipation of that. Secondly, I took a look at what other school districts do, and some of the, you know, more seasoned staff, if you will, at other SAUs, this is exactly what they do. Many of them provide the financials at a deeper level than we do. Many provide a summary. So that could be something that, you know, as we go down the road and we get a new business administrator up and running, that might be something that serves our community a little bit better, you know, as a monthly summary of what's going on as opposed to the every single account number detail.
So the monthly summary of the month, of the month previous or monthly summary projecting?
Previous.
Previous.
Yeah, I wouldn't remember.
Okay.
Projection.
Okay.
By month. I think the annual budget projection.
And at this.
Do we have a start date for our new business administrator?
August 1. So I'm, while certainly the reports for January can be pulled that morning, to be able to say we're going to have a summary with that for this time around, not so much.
Sure, I'm just kind of envisioning that this could set us up smoothly for some sort of a, just saying what I saw in other school districts.
You know, I guess I would follow up and support that by saying if we, if we set up a shared drive, a shared folder that has some organizational folders inside it, and we just slid these documents in and out, what I want to avoid is opening up a page and having 18,000 Excel files for people to see. Just have what's pertinent that day, and when the month switches, take those out, put the new ones in, so that it's always clear what's there and people learn how to, where to find things easily instead of hunting.
So you're not looking at this becoming a repository. You're looking at this having just the current past month?
Right. If we, if we have a repository someplace, it could be someplace else. But just the here and now snapshot thing.
Like an archive perhaps.
Right, archive.
Okay.
But I don't think, I don't see the purpose for.
Yeah, perhaps Ms. Louden, did I pronounce her name right?
Louden, yep.
Louden would need to, you know, be consulted as to.
It's a Google folder. I can do that. That's easy, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, similar to how we do the minutes.
Thing to mirror that sentiment. I mean, if we're leading by example, I think the website in general ought to be really reworked and revamped, make it more user-friendly anyway.
That's one of the things that we are looking at, that we want to put on the table when we have it ready together, so.
Perfect. And then the only other comment I want to make in regards to that is if we do have it up and it's not reviewed by the board, just have an addendum stating that draft until approved by board or something like that, just so that we know that it may change. It's not cast in stone at that point.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Any other new business?
I just have a question in regards to the manifests. I was going to ask you earlier, but I don't know if that would fall under new business. Well, first off, the ball fields water, the amount, is that paid quarterly, yearly? It's just amount paid is $2,976.
It's at least quarterly. I'll have to go back and double check because obviously we're not watering the ball fields all winter.
Yep.
It's primarily just.
It was grouped with the payments for water and sewer.
Yeah, it looks like it's its own invoice, though. That's what I wasn't sure. If that's an accumulated.
It says, because it's a separate meter on just the ball field.
Okay. I was just curious.
That's all. Thank you.
Any old business? Anything else?
The kindergarten moment is around 53.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's higher than this time last year.
It is.
Great.
Can we typically get more torquey out of the summer as well?
Right, right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public participation? Summer months are scarce. I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session two under RSA 91A:32AB and C for personnel.
It's moved.
And before we do that, sorry, our next regularly scheduled meeting is August 6th, right here at probably 6:30.
6:30 as far as we know.
Okay. Thank you to those of you who viewed from home this evening, and those of you that are here. So moved by, that was what, Mrs. McElhenny made that motion?
I did.
Second by Mr. Frida. All those in favor by roll?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.
All right.